Ready?
Do we have an attorney?
No attorney?
Uh, no, he's running late probably. He got tied up so probably 7:40.
Okay. I'd like to bring to order the Town of North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council Meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, December 7th, 2021 at 7:06 PM. We'll start off with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor McMillan. Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Councillor Abelson.
Here.
Councillor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Downs.
Here.
Councillor Goode.
Here.
Councillor Mace.
Present.
Councillor Paliccia.
He's on, he's on the phone. You hear that? Yeah. On via phone.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, need a motion for the previous meeting minutes, November 16th, 2021, WPCA and Regular Town Council Meeting.
Some second.
Any changes?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
November 30th, 2021, Special Town Council Workshop.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
We need two abstentions on that one.
Yeah. Bruce.
Bruce.
And Mike, yep. Get that, Michelle.
I did, thank you.
Okay.
Even though they don't speak, they did abstain.
Sure we did.
So move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondent citizen statements. Says none. Unfinished business, none. New business, sanitary sewer system overview.
So, I'm gonna give you folks a, thought it'd be a good idea with new council members and some historically seeded council members, just to give a brief overview of the system. I'm gonna try not to get too technical about things, like you know engineers like to do. So, the sanitary sewer system was installed in the Town of North Branford as a result of the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection Water to Abate Pollution. That was part of the Clean Water Act from the 1970s, and I promise I'm not doing history from the 70s to today, but I'm gonna just give you, you know, kind of an idea of why we have a sewer system. That was one of the main reasons. Approximately 35% of the town developed properties are serviced by the town sewage system. The Town of North Branford sanitary sewer system consists of three separate sewer systems. We have one system to the north of town here. We have another system to the southeast, southwest side of town, sorry, and another system, south central portion of town. The sanitary sewer system is considered an intermunicipal system in that the sewage that flows through the system then flows through other municipalities and eventually treated by sewage treatment plants in those municipalities. The three municipal systems that the town sewage goes to is the Town of North Haven, the Town of Branford, and the Greater New Haven WPCA, which passes through the Town of East Haven to get to that system. System A, or the Branford system, again, it's this south central system here. I'm gonna kinda just give a little zoom in. I hope the, at least we get some kind of an idea with, you know, with what portion of town we're dealing with. It's basically this Route 80 portion of town, south of there, and then we're basically dealing with the Twin Lakes Road area, Branford Road, and a portion of Notch Hill. There's approximately 567 properties that contribute flow to the system there. There are two pump stations that support the system and two metering stations. The pump stations are on Twin Lakes Road and just off of Route 139 or Branford Road. The metering stations, which again are take, are monitoring the flow, the total flow that's leaving the town from the system. We have one on DeForest Drive and one on Branford Road. So that takes us to, jump over to the next system, system, or section, System B. This system here contributes flows to the Greater New Haven WPCA system through East Haven again. This is primarily the western portion of Fox and Road, just south of, everything south of Mill Road and everything west of Route 22 here. So we're dealing with that portion of town. It's a little bit smaller system in that it services about 300, I wanna say 346 properties. There are no pump stations there, one meter station off of Williams Road right here. And this system is, was constructed in the mid to late 1970s, so aging this system into 40-plus years of service. I may have forgot to mention on the, on System A, that's also a system constructed in the 70s, so again, another system that is aging into 40 years of service. The last system, the northern system in the Northford area, again, it's basically two separate systems. This portion of the system on Clintonville Road area was constructed first in the, I believe it was the 80s. Let me just check there. Yep, I'm trying to remember too much stuff. You're right. The second portion of this system was constructed in the early 90s, and that's a section off of basically Reed's Gap Road, or just east of Reed's Gap Road. And this, these two systems were interconnected along Route 17 with a 10-inch sewer main. Basically, there's three pump stations. If I can drag over here, the pump stations are located over here Reed's Gap Road, White Hollow Pump Station. There's a third pump station that has to boost us up the hill here on Mansfield Drive, one meter pit at the, off of Clintonville Road at the North Haven Town Line. This system serves about being its, the biggest system that we have, about 712 properties. I mentioned the pump stations already. The system, the age of the system, again, this one's aging into 40 years along the Clintonville section and 30 years along the Reed's Gap section. The Town of North Branford has written agreements with each of these municipal entities that we send sewage flows to. Each agreement is a little different, the timing of the agreement, obviously based on when the systems were built. The agreements also get into how we pay for the sewage that we send to each of those entities. It's based on the amount of flow or volume that we send to each of those systems on an annual basis, so they figure out, you know, a percentage of our flow being treated at their plant is then calculated into a cost for us based on, again, that's an annual payment that we make to each of those entities, and we go over that basic, we go over that during the budget process for the WPCA one. We do that, that's in the September, October timeframe when we go over all of that. The town has utilized the service of a contractor to provide for operational and maintenance of the sanitary sewer system since July of 1999. Since that point, we have contracted with two different companies over that period. The contractor that we're currently working with is Violia Water North America. They've provided services for operating and maintaining the system since 2005. Violia provides the qualified management, supervision personnel, and equipment necessary to maintain the sewer system in accordance with the generally accepted industry principles and practices. Basically, they're our on-call company for, on a 24/7 basis to handle any problems we might have with the system. They provide monthly reports, they monitor the amount of flow that we're sending to each of the other municipal entities. They also, I'm kinda just giving a shotgun approach of things that we could, we could probably spend an hour on the contract to see what they really do. They also clean or jet 20% of the lines, the sewage lines throughout town every year. They CCTV inspect 10% of the lines every year. They make recommendations for improvements. I work with their representative to schedule out some improvements that we can make, so we're making improvements before they become problems. They're, again, basically they're the 24/7 service for if there's problems, when there's alarms at each of the pump stations, they react to those and they deal with the problems, keep the system running. So again, I tried to keep it brief. If you have any questions or, you know, future meetings, I can get any additional information together for you. I'd be happy to do that.
I know you're very new to this.
Yeah.
For North Branford, but I was just curious as to what your thoughts are on our connection fees when people have to connect to the sewers, because there's been a lot of discussion, especially among developers, at the cost. And would you say contributing, having to pay to three different towns for, you know, capital improvement, does that go in, build into the cost of our connection fees?
Right. I mean, it certainly has a lot to do with it, the fact that we're not in total control of our, of our system, where we're paying other entities to treat the sewage flows. I did do a, I kind of repeated a study that Kurt Weiss, the previous engineer, did. I believe back in 2012-ish for the town council, I repeated a study that he did of similar communities, abutting communities to the Town of North Branford, and determined that, you know, we're probably about four times, on average, about four times more than the abutting communities sewer special connection fees would be. I guess if you, you know, if you asked for me to give an opinion, I know that's what you asked me to do, I really look at the system as, again, I kind of pumped in the age of the system, being at 40, mostly 40 years old that we're into or approaching for most of the system. For systems like this, a sanitary sewer system, we start seeing that we're, you know, you're running into problems or upgrades getting into 50 years into the system. So I'd say, you know, expect that into the next 10, 20 years, that you may notice more maintenance to the system, maybe more sections of pipe they have problems with that you may need to do upgrades to. We're running through some pump station upgrades, standard upgrades, replacing pumps that have never been replaced for the life of the system. So those are, you know, upgrades that we can take one step at a time, but all these things start to add up, and those are the things that we're hopefully pulling from those assessment, or connection fees, to help pay for some of those things. I've noticed from, sorry, long-winded answer.
No, it's okay.
I've noticed from the annual reports, one of the first, and, sorry, the monthly reports that Violia provides to us, I noticed right away that the pump stations, there's at least two of the pump stations in two different sections that are showing high rates of volume that they're pumping during rain events. So, you know, you could say, well, we weren't getting that many rain events during the summer previously, now it seems like we're getting more rain events. We're getting higher flows coming through the pump stations during these rain events, which means that we've got groundwater, rainwater entering the system. We're, we're paying, the residents are paying for that sewage or rainwater basically to be treated. And, you know, I'd like to look into a I&amp;I study, an influence infiltration study, to try to figure out if we can zone out some areas of the system that, you know, where we may have problems. Obviously, where water's leaking in, whether it's manholes, pipes, pump stations, or manhole covers, what have you. Illegal connections of gutters, things like that, or downspouts. So, there's a, I guess it's just saying that, you know, we should be probably looking forward to a cost, more maintenance on the system.
Fair.
So I have a question.
Sure.
When you said that, you know, the towns abutting us are, we're about four times, around four times higher than they are, but are the towns abutting us, which I think part of the answer is yes, but I'm asking, do they have, are they, do they have their own treatment systems where we don't, as you explained, we, you know?
So, some of the towns, some of the towns do, some don't. I basically use the same comparison towns that Kurt used. They were, it looked like they were used because they were similar size to the Town of North Branford, similar, you know, residential versus commercial and retail layout to North Branford. So that was the rationale for that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there a difference between a storm drain and a sewer system? Because some sections may have septic tanks, but they have storm drains on the street. Are we paying for storm drains, which is rainwater or melting snow? Are we paying for that as well as a sewer system?
Right. So the, the town's, North Branford Sewer System was, was built before, or was built recent enough, even though I say it's 40 years old, where it was built so no storm drains or catch basins, like you're saying, were actually designed or connected into it, whereas when you look at a city like New Haven, there, they've been battling with an interconnected system being that when they laid it out, all of the sewage and all of the storm water was all interconnected and went right out to Long Island Sound before they really ever treated it, I guess you'd say. So ours wasn't set up that way. I wouldn't expect to find, or, you know, it'd be a big mistake if we found a catch basin connected to a sewer pipe, and I'd probably ask Fran about it. No. No. No, we don't, we shouldn't have that scenario. All set?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report. Thank you.
Citizen statements. Okay. Move into the Regular Town Council Meeting. Reports of commissions, boards and, or committees, boards and commissions. First one, economic development.
Economic development met last night, and there is an extensive report in our packet starting on page 19, or 18, from Roger Solway. One of the main things I just would like to highlight is that Honeywell in, it did a collaboration with the North Branford Land Trust, and they had a day where they had employees, like a community day, get back to the community, and they built hiking trails near, that borders Honeywell and the Ice Pavilion, so they spent a day working with the land trust and are developing that area. And that was one of their, you know, ways of giving back to the community and engaging the community in doing this. So, hats off to Honeywell for doing that. And the rest of the information you can read through. It's quite an extensive report from Roger.
If I could, Mayor, in addition to that, they, they met and reviewed, I left a brochure. So there's a brochure, one there, and I think I put one on this end to circulate for the Farm Trail brochure that's in a draft form right now, but they're still working on it, but I thought it might be good to circulate that. They're coming to the, near the finishing, that project up, so. That and just that the group had contemplated a state-of-the-town event at Mill Pond Tavern that we are now postponing and moving toward, to the spring for April versus January. So, I'll have more detail on that for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Parks and Rec.
Park and Rec met last week. One of the items that was discussed are the lights for the STW courts. It's later on in our agenda to approve the bid specs. This is being funded through LoSeP funds in our budget, and the price of the bid, which the bids are becoming very competitive, and they really stick to their, you know, 30 days if, if a bid is good for 30 days or so. So we really need to take action on that tonight, so they've already had one price increase from the last time they got a bid, and it, you know, expired before it came to us. It's still under bid, under project for the cost. We have 125,000 of LoSeP funds, and this bid is just over 115,000, and there's gonna be a little bit of ancillary cost from Wallingford Electric to actually hook up the lights to it, but that will put lights on the courts. Those courts do get used a lot, not just for tennis, but there's a big portion of it where they play street hockey, use it for that, they also have pickleball, so those courts do get used a lot. So I think it's a wise investment for that. There was also discussion about the disc golf course that they are looking at putting in. Disc golf is quite a popular sport. There's only two other towns right now that have courses. One is Wallingford and one is Guilford. This would be a nice complement between the two towns because they could host tournaments and bring people out for it. So they are currently looking at that. It is an extensive project. They are applying for grant for doing this. They're also thinking about doing it in phases, nine holes at a time, because it would be like 18 holes for, actually, like a golf course, but it's done with disc. So, it's along, it's on the Auger property, along the Farm River is where they are looking at the sites. They have met with inland wetlands and have had some discussions, so that is moving along to see exactly what that would look like and how they could do this. And the third thing is, and the director is here and the chair of the commission, but we are having, they are having extensive problems with the stove in the senior center, in the community center, which is used to cook meals for the seniors that they provide every day. They tried fixing it. It has gone out a number of times in the last month. They have tried fixing it, everything that they are doing, it's not working. So it's to the point now where they will be asking for emergency funds to get it fixed, which we would have to take out a contingency, which is a vote from the council. But, and the estimated cost is somewhere between $6,000 and $10,000. But if, right now, if, if we designate it as an emergency, they do not have to go out to bid. They could, being designated as emergency, we could just allocate the funds from contingency so that they could purchase the stove. If we didn't do that, they would have to go through the whole bid process and everything else, and it, there's a very good chance that they would be, without being able to serve meals to the seniors, because they wouldn't have a stove if it goes down. Jess is here from Park and Rec, and she could, if you have any questions or anything, or if you want to give us a little bit more information, now Jess, great.
Yeah, I think you covered it kind of, Rose, but the stove is almost 20 years old, so it's hitting its life expectancy. We have numerous repairs. We've done three in the past month that are starting to become extremely costly. They're about $400 apiece every time they come out, and it seems to be one part after another after another. So I think it would behoove us to spend the money and replace it so that we have consistent meals. These stoves or ovens tend to last about 30 years if you've got a good one. It usually comes with a warranty, so it guarantees that we're able to continue with service without interruption. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, what's the cost, approximate cost?
Anywhere between $6,000 to $10,000 based on the models. I'm still waiting on quotes. We are going off state contract and a national contract to get it, so we are still following typical bid procedures and everything like that. So I've contacted five different vendors. I just got word from the contractor, came out today to look at it again, to see if we can do a quick repair, since we have a 100-person Christmas dinner coming next week. So, we already have 80 seniors registered, and my cook is kind of freaking out about the stove, so we're gonna try to get it up and running for that, but it seems to be like a monthly problem.
What's the difference between a $6,000 stove and a $10,000 stove?
So, some of it has to do based on the phasing, the amperage. The reason the price range is I'm still waiting on quotes, like Branford just put theirs in last year, it was about three grand, but as you've seen with pricing, it's changed so much, so it's hard to say if that pricing, it was $3,000 for the stove and then $3,000 for the connector hose, which gets us to the six grand. Ours might be an increase in 3,000 from, based off the increase in pricing for supplies and the demand. So, there's not really a difference in what we're looking for specifically. I'm looking at a Bulgart stove, if you know anything about it. It's a single phase, and we're looking for a propane connection. So that's sometimes the difference between whether you're doing propane, electric, single phase, but we're just looking for a standard 50 BTU.
And what's the current energy now? Is it propane or what?
We're currently on propane right now, so it's not a change in what we're doing, and we're not operating our phases or anything like that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add item 13D, stove replacement at STW Community Center.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had that as Angeloni and Downs, is that correct?
Yeah, that's fine. Police Commission?
The next meeting for the Police Commission is next Monday, December 13th.
Okay. Fire Commission?
Nothing right now. I'll update the council when I'm back with questions. Thank you.
Board of Education, Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Planning and zoning, next meeting is Thursday this week. Finance Subcommittee?
We still have to appoint people, so the next meeting will probably be after the New Year.
All right. Permanent Project Building Committee, North Branford High School and North Branford Police Department, update.
Okay, Colombo, Permanent Projects and PD Commission. We, since we met with you guys on our workshop last week, we have made some movement on some items, but we have Gil Bain here and Rusty to give us an update for you guys, to show you where we're at. You know where we spoke last week in regards to our contingency funds, and we'll talk a bit about that in a minute or two, but I'll have Gil Bain while he's still here to give you an update on where we stand right now. We are moving ahead. You know, I'll let, I'll let Amar kind of fill you in.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amar Shamas. I'm with Gil Bain Building Company, construction manager for the North Branford High School. Just to give you a recap, update where we are as far as progress on the project. The project's moving according to schedule. We are near completion on the foundations, a lot of underslab, plumbing and electrical systems, conduits that is are in place. We are working very actively with the design team as it relates to processing of submittals, shop drawings, procuring materials. That's been ongoing for the past at least month and a half and will continue probably for the next two months as well, as we continue to procure materials for the building. Structural steel is under fabrication right now for the project, for the, what we call sequence steel, which is the first half of the building, and that's slated to be onsite around late January for erection of the structural steel for the project. And everything is tracking to our schedule currently. There are no surprises, and we're working very closely with the Building Committee, the Design Team on a weekly basis to make sure we're working together on making sure the project stays on track. And that's pretty much as the updates. We are meeting on a regular basis, meeting once a week onsite with the Design Team, CSG, as well as representatives of the Building Committee to go over the project as far as updates and any issues that the team is working on to make sure the project stays on track. So that's the general update unless there's specific questions.
Are you having any trouble getting materials at all? Is that working okay now?
Working very well. We're tracking, we track materials very carefully. Obviously, there are the supply chain issues that we're constantly, as everybody's aware, we're dealing with, and we are constantly looking at our schedule, but so far, that's why we're working very hard and making sure the materials gets released on time, so we don't have to face any delays as it relates to material supply chain issues. The roofing materials, as you recall, the metal roof was the last item that we presented to you about two weeks ago. We have released and went through the approval process that relates to the color for the aluminum, which is the metal roof, and that's being released, and again, we're tracking that as well. So, so far, knock on wood, no issues. We're, obviously, you hired us for this, so we're doing the best job we can for you.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to talk about dollars? You guys were updated last week on numbers in the workshop. So you guys should have, Mike, do they have it?
No.
So as we talked last week, Al came in front of you guys with all of us for the shortfall of, for the contingency of 3.3, but there's a number in there at 777, which is our shortfall because of bonding issues, as we all talked about last week. So we still need to continue to get our contingency funds to hold that 5%, because if we go over 5%, there's no reimbursement from the state. So that 777108 is our shortfall for bonding purposes, as we talked about last week. The 3.3 is what we need to hold the 5% owner contingency. So.
Just, just to clarify what he's saying, go to the top of your line item where it says budget grant. $559,250 was the original allowance that was carried.
What we talked about last week.
For bonding. Then on 12-2, 2021, we included a million dollars for the bonding, which came from the Finance Department, the increase. Then on 12-7, 2021, we were told to include 1.5 million from finance costs, bringing us a negative $777,108 just on bonding, almost little over three quarters of a million. We can't control that, but you can't go over to 5% contingency. So when you add the two line items together, what we're really asking you for is $4,089,227.
You don't have that figure, but if you add those, the 3.3 and the 777, it's $4,089,000.
Which Marnie and I sent an attachment to a bunch of permanent project building committee members and the council, just so they were aware of what was coming.
All right, CSG just got this to us at 5. That's why you guys are getting it now.
So we just got this?
From last night, yeah. We just got these numbers at the end of today.
But out of that $4,089,000, just be aware, we're only going to be reimbursed 5% of the $3 million, out of the 5% contingency, $3,312,119.55.
Anthony, so is that?
What's that? Yeah, 41%.
Is that usual for the bonding to go up like that?
It's not up at all. If you go back to the motion that you guys passed last November, I had a million dollars of interest and 500,000 of issuance cost, 1.5 million. When the budget was created by other people, someone put 559 in the budget. So the budget was flawed from the beginning that was created. So the million dollars, bring in the million and a half, ties right into the motion you guys passed last November. So it wasn't that finance bumped the number up. The budget was incorrect in the beginning.
Okay. I'm just, yeah.
Yeah. I just want to make sure it's portrayed properly that finance didn't change the numbers. Finance had the numbers back, and even those numbers, as we're seeing now with inflation kicking up, short-term interest rates are trying to, you know, tick up a little bit. Who knows what they're going to be in the next two or three years. So it's purely an estimate, but it was a million and a half, the number I put before you guys last November. But when the budget was created, only half a million dollars was in there. So it was a million dollars off from the beginning.
Okay. Anthony's correct about that. So before the permanent project building committee members got this, get the 559,000 was set from prior to the permanent project building.
Yeah. We just want to just make sure we all understand where the numbers are coming from.
That was the original number.
It was the original number that was carried during budget.
Can I ask you a question? When you guys go out to bid, do you think you're going to recoup some of this money?
No, because obviously we're.
Well, savings on when you're going out to bid.
We're already out.
We're already went out to bid.
I thought you rebid it. I thought it's going out for rebid.
No, that's the police department. This is the high school.
Oh, this is the high school. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I remembered. So what happened during construction is we took the chillers off the roof.
Yep.
We took, and Walter contested this, we don't need to lower the, or increase the site going higher, but by taking all the chillers off the roof, we decreased the low capacity, what we needed. So we should have saved money there. The roofing penetrations, all the steel and all that, and we're still short $3,312,000. So we did a lot of value engineering to get to this point, and we're still short, but we have to replenish the 5% contingency. The bonding had nothing to do with financing or that project. That was prior to anybody.
But this is, this number's including the metal roof, so you know.
Okay.
Plus. All the add alternates.
All the add alternates.
Yeah, it's about a half a million dollars in add alternates that we got. I think we have, what do we have left? Just ice melt?
Snow melt.
Snow melt.
Yeah. Which 777. There's a line item we're adding in for.
Right.
So Dave, just to make it clear.
Yes.
How much are you asking us for now?
Four million 89,227.
And that does, that numbers appear in the email that was part of the package for item 13C.
Yep.
And I do apologize, you know, the other member missing is Chris from.
CSG, right.
CSG.
He's running behind.
Well, and I told him that, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda until item 13C, but obviously we're into it now and under the committee report. So I think he felt he probably had some time before seven or after seven o'clock.
Yeah, he's about 20 minutes behind.
I should have explained that to him, that it could be taken up either, either location.
But we're not voting on it anyway. So we can always ask more questions before, when we get to 13C.
Yeah.
Is there going to come a time where you're going to ask for more for this?
We don't know.
We're trying. Yeah, we're trying not to.
We would like to make.
We want to come back for you. Right.
To the council, we would like to make it clear, Lou, I, David, we all spoke today. The 5% contingency is only there for contingencies.
Right.
We're not, we're gonna, me, Lou and Tom right now are in the middle of the MVPs going over some middles. We're going to fight hard with Amar and Rusty to keep the cost down that 5% contingency. We're going to scrape real hard not to give.
And as we said last week, we were talking that we may not use it all, but we don't want to come back more than once, as Al said last week. So we're not inundating you guys. Right, we only want to go to the stable ones as well.
I would like for the council to ask for all the stuff that we took out, contingencies that we took out and save money, like the air handlers, the chillers getting relocated to roof. You know, the council is obviously authority and have a jurisdiction or a financing. Ask that information from Rusty with a cost breakdown, what we took out, what we added in, and what it did to our timeline and see how we got to this number. We obviously can't ask for those financial bodies, but if you ask for that, that'll dictate what we took out for savings and what we put in for stuff that was made in mist or overseen. Because at the beginning, when Al asked me to check the building, if it could go up 18 inches, and with Amar's help and John Florio, I was out there for three days when we raised it. We also cut back on the walls, retaining walls, site excavation and all that. We don't know what those costs are. We'd like for the council to get them, so we can see what we've got going on.
And Rusty is here. Rusty, you want to add anything to your report?
No, I would just say that if you approve additional funds, one of the things we can do is file what's called an 049R application to make that money, because up to this point, your only, your ground funding is for 66.2 million. We'll find, file the 049R, make this balance eligible. So if it's expended, it would then also be eligible for reimbursement. So that's an important step that we will take, depending on what you approve, whatever we go over that approved amount at this point.
So I just wanted, so on this paper that we just got, under original grant, it has owner contingency at 2.9 million. And then down in the new budget, it has 5% owner contingency at 3.3. So.
Basically, Rose, that other contingency is gone.
That, that contingency was based on a 3% calculation, the 2.9.
Original.
The original one we were calculating.
Okay.
And I think at this point, we're going to the 5%, just so that, I think the committee felt that we don't want to come back to the council again.
Don't maximize it.
Maximize that number.
So if, so is it the 2.9 plus the 3.3?
No.
No.
No. I mean, so if it's only a 2% increase, but that, that's only a $400,000 increase between 2.9 and 3.3, which doesn't seem, it seems too low for just 2%.
Constable Angeloni, 2.9 is gone.
Yeah.
No, I know. I, I know the 2.9 is gone, but if that's 3% there, and this new one is 5%.
On the new amount.
Amount.
On the new amount, that is not our contract. The construction value is going up. If you look at the construction value, so the new percentage on the new number, the higher number.
The original number was the 3%.
I know it looks smaller. Remember, the 2.9 is based on the 55, the 3.2.
Oh, the 55. You're going, not total, 55.
Based on the 66. What Marnie did is, she did the Excel sheet that you see from latest date to current date. So you kind of got to go backwards and look at it forward.
So the new number is the 66.
It's a different amount, the percentage.
So what, wait. So what does the state require? Is it 3% or 5%?
The state required, what the state does is, it's not a requirement, but what they will, what they say is if you exceed 5% of your project cost, then anything you expend beyond that is not eligible for reimbursement. Hence, we're trying to limit it to that 5% of the project.
So the requirement is 5%?
Right.
More than that, there's no reimbursement.
I, I understand that. That's what I'm trying to say. So, because originally you figured on 3%. Now they changed it to 5% or?
No, we, we just had 3% at that point. It was on a smaller number, but we've made a lot of changes that occurred since then.
Okay.
Right.
All that is, all that has come to our bottom line.
I, I know, but if we, if we give them this 5% here, and they've already used this, we're way over 5% of the state, plus you have to add the 777 in.
And that's not a lot of wiggle room between what they're asking for and what we're going to pay.
So what was taken out? Just to recap to me if you don't mind. They took out the roof, meaning to go down the budget before the permanent project committee ever started. So when we got to the design stage and the permanent project building committee was formed by council, there were some cost savings to get it down to, just use the number, 66 million. But the roof was taken out, the bond issue came in, which wasn't anybody's issue, that's a million dollars, roof 650,000, which came out to 692,000. So right there, you got a million seven alone. It took the contingencies away. Then there was a bunch of add alternates in there with snow melt and stuff that was taking out of the original budget to get to the 66 million dollar budget, which had nothing to do with the permanent project building. I want to make that clear. We inherited it when we got, we're working for what we got. And the emails that were, when we were going back in May, and you guys were fortunate, thank you for putting me on, and I went and did a timberline program. When I put those numbers in and their cost escalations, it's showing the runs and we're getting close to those numbers. So you're going to be between 7 and 9%.
Escalation, bonding, add alternates is why we're at right today.
Yeah, we're just, we're just, we're just, we're just trying to understand the numbers. We're not, we're not pointing fingers. We're just trying to understand the numbers.
Yeah, nothing to do with the architect.
They're going to point fingers. This guy's right here.
Cost escalation are through the roof. The only difference is, when the police station was bid, and I use the police station, it was bid at the worst time possible.
Right.
The good part about this school, work with Amar and Rusty, is we actually started saving money because the de-escalation started coming down. So it could have been worse if we started way back.
Right, I think with the PD, I think we're going to be ahead of.
We're going to be ahead of the game. Numbers are starting to calm down.
Right. Going out to bid when we want to go.
But I still like to see the cost breakdown of what we took out, if you could ask for it, and what we put in versus what our numbers are. I'd like to see that both announced.
Do we, do we have that, Rusty?
The cost aspect is handled by Gil Bane. So we have the breakdown of what the components are, and they would have the.
Rusty, what I was looking for is prior to, prior to him going out to bid, what I'm looking for you is all the deducts that we took out, the extra steel that we didn't need, the chillers coming down off the roof, the electrical that wasn't going to be done, the building going up. That's nothing to do with Gil Bane at the time. What I'm looking for you is that cost breakdown, if the council's willing, versus what we're putting in today from his numbers and line the two up so we can get a comparison of where we're going to go for two years down the road. It'll give us a timeframe, a baseline, and a cost for the permanent project building committee to really focus on what we can save.
We can put a number together, but Gil Bane's been the estimating arm throughout the entire design process, so they probably have that number and we'll work together.
We'll take it offline when the building.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
If you can hit that button, we'll present it. Yeah, just so you know, they did their job.
Yeah.
Unbelievable. It's the cost escalations versus what we're getting today versus what we could have got two years ago.
And these guys, like I said, every week we meet with these guys. They've been a great team to work with. We have a great permanent project, you know, committee. So, you know, unfortunately, between escalation, bonding, and our add alternates, which are on, plus the roof, that's where the.
Okay, so I just need some clarification here. So you said the state will reimburse up to 5% for owner's contingency, but if we file this form and we go over the 5%, and you have the costs associated with it, you can get, you can still get reimbursed for it?
So our goal right now would be to keep it at the 5%. If we file the form, the 049R, and let's say you've added 4 million to the, to the number, so the 66 is now at 70, let's say, that'll be the new number that the benchmark for the 5% will be based on. So it'll be the 5% on 70. And if we then exceed costs in our contingency category over that 5%, that will be ineligible. It's not that you can't do it. If you chose to just add something, for instance, to the scope of the project and felt that it's absolutely necessary, and you exceeded the 5%, all that'll happen is that portion will not be eligible for state funded, for reimbursement.
But we're losing $500,000. 5% of 70 million is 3.5 million, but we have $4 million in the contingency. Where's that 500,000?
Plus, plus there's already 2.9 that they spent on contingency.
Because what you're doing is you're raising the number from 66 to 70. So you're saying 5% of 70 million is 3.5 million dollars. We're putting in 4 million dollars.
So one other aspect that you need to be aware of is on every project, there's a category called ineligible. So the, not the, the finance, the interest costs on the, on the bonding are not eligible for reimbursement.
Right.
So one way to break this out is to take that as a separate item, and therefore it would not be eligible for reimbursement anyway. So if you separate that out, then you can, you know, stay within the 3.0, the 3.5.
Constable Abelson, I get what you're saying. So what had happened during, before the permanent project building committee got it, so I'm clear to everybody. I'm taking a different approach. I'm taking a very non-grid sandpaper approach. I'm trying.
That's okay.
I'm trying. It's a little different for me. It's very different.
It's hurting.
It's hurting. So what had happened, they took all these, I, I'm speaking, I'm trying. They took all the stuff out before the permanent project building committee got the files. By taking all that out to get to the numbers that the council approved, forced the council to approve a budget for the school, forced me to go forward, but we took out the roof and a lot of other stuff they wanted, okay?
At that time, we didn't have the.
We didn't even know. We have. We didn't have no say so. So now we got to put it back in for the best interest of the school, the town, and longevity of the school. So yes, you're right. It should have been 3.5 million, but we put all the contingencies and the add alternates back in that the school definitely has to have. We tried every option. One of the options, we spoke last night, and I wasn't there last night, it was my 25th anniversary, but I'm dead against a 24-hour generator fuel tank. We're going to get a bill and ask Amar and his team and Rusty to work together, a minimum of 48 hours, because Fran, he'll tell you, you can't fuel a 24-hour emergency generator in the middle of a 24-hour storm. Am I wrong, Fran?
No, you're not wrong.
So you need a 48-hour tank. So we're going to get a cost for that. But in the bid specs, it did call for it, but the original design, we're going way back, had a gas fire. Am I correct, Rusty? Natural gas. All this was taken up. So we're working with what we have, and trust me, we are grinding every dollar and every penny. And it, it does bring a lot of passion into certain people, taking, like I said, taking a different approach.
$500,000 is a lot of money.
But a million dollars of it was the bond issue that had nothing to do with financing. But a million dollars of it was the bond issue that had nothing to do with finance or anybody. So technically, you know, we're asking for 4 million.
We didn't expect to have a million dollars in bonding.
It's a big hit.
Yeah.
And we're only starting, so where it's gonna go, we don't know.
So why, why did we take out a, a gas-fired generator? Just, I, I didn't realize that.
So originally, when I, when I got onto the committee, I go and speak for myself, I was pushing for a cogeneration system. Everybody knows about it, fought hard for it, why? Because it's self-propelling something, you don't come off the grid, and it saves the taxpayers. By the time we were done, in 25 years, it would've paid for the building, okay? But the chillers were originally on the roof, okay? And I, and I said it to Rusty, and it's documented in meetings, and Amar's right here with Dave and Lou, is if you put chillers on the roof, you have to worry about noise. So there was acousticals of $175,000 for sound attenuation, remember Rusty? Because you have to try to keep the decimal levels. Now steel, and Walter, that's your specialty, you know when you put tons of stuff on a roof, what do you gotta do to steel? Increase it, which is costly. We took all that out, come to find out they put it on the ground because the roof won't hold the load and the noise. So we reduced all that. But by doing that, put the chillers on the ground, if we did the cogeneration system, it would've been self-sufficient, it's a moot point at this point. And we wouldn't have needed a generator, and it would've ran off natural gas, propelled electricity, heating and cooling off of one natural source, would've an 80% reimbursement from the state. I was trying to sell it, that didn't work. Then we went to a 15 KW generator, diesel-fired, because it was almost the same expense as a gas-fired 400 KW. So I figured you need to take out gas, for 300, 400 grand, you might as well put in a diesel, right, and power the whole building. Then you got everything, searchers, resters, all that is included and encumbered, that didn't work. So we went to a 400 KW generator, the sound enclosure, and I was, I was sticking to a 72-hour tank, I couldn't make it last night, but I'll settle for a 48, but we still gotta pay for it. All the specs got changed to reduce the costs. Permanent project building committee's working what we have, Gilbane is bidding it per plans and spec. But how we got there, Tom, Mayor, Apollo Jack, is that's how we got there, all the, the energy savings and all that stuff just wasn't in the, it wasn't planned in there, we were too late.
Okay. So I'm still, so you have 5% owner contingency at 3.3, you're short 770, so you're short, so you're asking for 4.1 million, roughly? Okay, and then you said the first owner contingency of 2.9 is gone, so are we at owner contingency then of 7 million dollars?
No, when we say, so what we did, I think what was shown here is we just balanced it all out, so everything that's been expended on the, for the finance, for the alternates, any, any of those changes for the metal roof, all these things are factored out, so we basically said, what are our expenditures till this point? And then at the end of it, we said, okay, now we wanna have a, a 5% contingency, that's, that's the number you see. So everything else is just gone back into the project, the project expenditures.
So Councilman John, I'm gonna answer you in the old-fashioned way. Yes, it's gone. Yes, it's spent, to put all the contingencies that were taken out that the school.
Yeah, we spent 2.9.
Exactly.
And you're asking for 4.1, so you add the two together and you get 7 million.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, but that's not how it's presented.
Correct.
That's not how, as Rusty's explaining it, that's not how this gets presented as.
It was spent on, if, if certain bid packages went over, it was spent on that as well. So it wasn't wishfuls items, it was just paid to cover the cost.
No, 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 I, I understand that, but I just, I'm trying to get, I just wanna get the contingency factor because it's 7 million, and I'm still down on the line that says that the state will reimburse 5% of the, you know, in contingency, so we're way over the 5% at 7 million.
Those items are not contingency items, so what happened is, for instance, items that.
The 2.9 because you incorporated into the project.
Into the base bid.
Okay.
So that's why it's not being factored as a contingency.
So basically, project went over budget on certain line items, paid it out of contingency. But in your theory, from a business standpoint, that mean you would do business on a newspaper? Yes.
Yes.
We spent 7 million, but we had to cover the base bids.
And we might not spend the whole 7 million because there still might be contingency leftover when you ask for this, because you're coming to ask for contingency once. So you want to get the maximum dollars upfront, and you're hoping to return a good portion of that.
Correct.
3.5 million.
We're hoping, we're still early.
Hoping to return 3.5.
It's still early in the, in the, in the job.
It's still, it's still early.
With, I mean, Amar, you couldn't have answered that as well, I mean, we have all our goals in it right now.
I understand, so are there any, so to get some of the money back.
Contingency, but now we want.
It's a lot of money. Are there any programs federally, state, that we can apply for? So already been applied for? That 2.9 just becomes part of the. Anything on there that we can apply for.
I probably could've stuffed it over there, so now we're asking. Like I said, I'm trying to differ.
Okay.
So are there any, is there anything else out there?
All right.
All right.
Do you understand the number or not?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I gotta, those are the, that's the real fact, is that it's 7 million in contingency that we're graphed, that's.
And we only want to do one. In a sense, it's correct.
And just in case there is money in Gilbane's contingency, just in case, instead of coming back, maybe Gilbane's company would be nice enough to donate a fire truck to volunteers. Or maybe a stove to the.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Nothing on the PD, obviously, so.
Right.
Okay.
We're voting on that later, on the agenda.
Public Safety Communications Subcommittee?
Public Safety Communications Subcommittee met on December 1st. We had a PowerPoint presentation by Paul Zito on the entire communications project along with cost. I know that the town council's gonna be working on that for the next meeting on December 17.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay, Town Manager's report?
Yes, so, uh, you have the COVID report, um, and I believe you have additional, uh, printout of stats from the governor you should have in your, in your folder in terms of looking at it statewide. And, and I guess maybe I'll, I'll summarize in the interest of time to, you can look through, obviously look through the, through the numbers and where we're at with respect to the amount of cases. Um, we obviously had a, a high mark in August, as I've said, at 90, it came down 58, 31, November, crept back up to 68. Earlier this afternoon, I was on the phone with the Health Director, and it is getting, it is heating up in cases. So for the district, there have been 130 cases in the last two days. So that's majority not North Branford, but that's the district, and the district is only three, Branford, North Branford, and East Haven, so 130 cases in the last two days.
Those confirmed or probables?
Those are confirmed.
Or both?
And do they know if they're vaccinated or unvaccinated?
I don't have the level of detail yet in terms of what the breakthrough is, in terms of vaccinated. I think it's probably going to, uh, track what the state statistics are at roughly 75% unvaccinated. Uh, so unfortunately, I think we're seeing things heat up here in the district. And I don't know, you know, where, where that number goes from here, but that's alarming at, at this point in the last two days, so. Um, I will continue to monitor, we have another call again Thursday, and we'll see what those are, and I can report those numbers out after Thursday's meeting. Um, and there was, I, I think additional correspondence in terms of our vaccination clinics and booster clinics would be in your, in your file as well, in your folder. So I will keep you, I will keep you posted.
We've got like a 79% vaccination rate for at least first doses. Do we know what the full vaccination rate is for the town?
Um, I don't have that, it's, it's, it's pretty good. Um, I'll get that for you, Mike, I, I can't, off the top of my head, remember.
I know it's online too, I just, I was wondering.
I don't know if it's in, in the report here or not, let me just dig up what.
Well, there was one slide of.
Initially, fully, uh, 67. Oh, wait a minute, no, I'm sorry, that's, that's the state, that's the state number. Uh, North Branford, 7, it looks like 72. 72, 38 on, I forget what number slide that is, but.
Pretty good.
Page 44.
72.
Thanks.
Okay.
Item B, Mike?
Yeah, item B is, uh, an item that came up at the previous council about ATVs and the change in, in the state allowing us to take a look. There was a draft ordinance, I put that back in for members to look at to see if there's an appetite to move this forward. I can certainly bring this, uh, this is for informational purposes, and I can bring it forward to the next meeting on the 21st to set up a, a public hearing if, if the council feels like it wants to go forward, and Deputy Chief Lovelace is here to give a recap and an overview for the new members and, and previous members with respect to the ordinance and what it allows us to do. What's different this time around with the possibility of moving forward with this ordinance?
Excellent. Um, so there's, I've been in front of the council, I think numerous times, for ATV-related issues or questions. So this stems back a while. So what happens is, way back years ago, when they created this statute, to give you a brief overview, they set a limit on enforcement that every other town around us enjoys, other than Durham, with a population of 20,000 or more. So everything in this, this packet, in this possible ordinance, is what every other town around us with a population of 20,000 or more has been able to enforce. Why is that important? Because it gives you extra teeth in the game, all right? Um, ATVs are a, it's not a small problem in this town, and it's the towns around us, this is a cultural and behavioral problem. And you can attest to that, you can ask Park from right behind me, I'm not gonna put you on the spot. Uh, but we were over there the other day when they were setting up for the tree lighting ceremony, and they had two ATVs circling around them, destroying town property as they're trying to set up a festival for the kids and the residents of town to come see the tree lighting. That's not normal behavior that we've seen, it's getting increasingly worse. So we've used many different tactics in the past, some have worked, others haven't, we modify, we continue the ones that work, but one of the ones we've always been fighting for is to be able to have the same enforcement options as towns with a population of 20,000 or more. And what we've campaigned with, Representative Vincent Canolora, who put it forward and was supported by Senator Cohen, and finally got passed, that municipalities with less than 20,000 population could, if they chose, to enact in an ordinance, which gave them the same tools that are described in this ordinance. So anything in here could be changed or modified if the council saw to go forward with this. But after bringing back that information, the commission, Police Commission assigned me with the task of coming up with the ordinance, which I did. I ran it through the town, our town attorney, he made some minor modifications. It was brought back to the Police Commission, who voted unanimously to bring it to the council, to possibly give us another tool to address the issue that we're having with these ATVs in town. So this won't be our only tool, but it would be another tool in our toolbox to use for this problem. Obviously, read through the ordinance, if you have any questions, myself or Benny, we'll, we'll be happy to answer them for you. If you have questions before, or if you decide to go to your next meeting, please email me out in the meantime, and I can get you that information to the council, so you can have it and review it instead of being put on the spot with the information at that time, but however you choose to go for it. But that's a quick overview of, of the problem that we've had. We've, we've had numerous deaths of adults and juveniles of residents in our own town. Recently, on Tuckett Road, up on Water Company property, they stopped some, they got razors that are the four-wheel-drive two-passenger, four-passenger vehicles that are now tearing up our water supply in the town of North Branford, up on the Water Company property, that just happened this past weekend. We're making arrests, but the changes to the juvenile statutes over the past couple of years have taken all the teeth out of what our enforcement has done. And that's just a sad reality of, of where we are, and you watch the news, and you see what's going on up at the Capitol, and that's so. This would give us more teeth back in the game from the town's end to enforce that, and that's, that's basically what we're trying to attempt here.
Would it be possible for you to give a quick summary of what you have now versus what this would do?
Sure. So enforcement-wise, we can't do any seizures under very limited circumstances. It has to come down to, um, it can't be a motor vehicle offense, it would have to be a, a criminal offense as seen. Even if we do that seizure, what happens is the court releases it before our paperwork even clears the courthouse, before the, the person is adjudicated, whatever it is. So there's no teeth in that seizure, even if we do make a seizure. Regardless of that, if we can't make a seizure, then they'll get a ticket, summons, or juvenile summons, depending on what the offense entails, and that could vary from time, you know, time to time of, of what the crime is. We've employed a number of officers out, so we, we identify individuals that we know who own ATVs in town, or out of town we've used, and we've regionalized that with Water Company officers and other town officers, because there's times these vehicles go down our roads and from North Haven, East Haven, Guilford, we've had them as far as New Haven. We used to get U-Hauls into town, we used to go to the City Mission property from all over the state of Connecticut, sometimes people out of state would rent U-Hauls, they load up all these ATVs and they, they'd end up in our jurisdiction. So we, we, at that time, we did a lot of knock and talks, as we call them, and it was there to educate the residents at that location on what the laws were, what our concerns were, have a conversation to see if we can change some minds, you know, let them see our point of view. Sometimes that worked, sometimes the door got slammed in our face, sometimes people didn't answer the door. You can follow it on social media, and there's a very strong belief by a percentage of people in this town that the town should provide this area at no cost to them, and that it's, the police department, the town's fault that they don't provide an area for them to ride. So there, that's where I say there's like that cultural behavior belief. It goes back years before I was even born into this town, so. But at that time, most of the people stayed in the wooded areas, which is, which is one thing. Now we're getting them driving down the roads, they got cameras on their helmets, they're kicking the side of our cruisers, they're trying to entice us to get into pursuits with them. They're endangering the public as they take off and fly through traffic and, and are gonna cause injuries to, to residents or non-residents traveling through the area. So it's increasingly amplified over the, over the past, I'd say, five to six years. So this, this gives us that tool of the seizures, to be able to impose fines, the fines from the state. You can't fine a juvenile, so there's no, there's no real teeth in the game there, because in most cases have, have been just tossed out of court. It's very, been very limited times where we've actually recouped a little bit of funds, but we got farmers in town that are renting town property that wanna support their families, and you got people on ATVs coming into the property destroying those crops. And the little funds that we get don't make up for all that damage. Or they'll come at night, and if the farmer calls on them, they'll destroy the, the property that the farmer has to produce those crops. So it's, it's, the vandalism and the, the aggressiveness of the individuals has, has severely increased over the, over the last couple of years, so. There is very similar ordinances that have been passed in towns around us, and that's kinda how we're, we're following the same suit now that we got the statutory change of it to state.
And you have a pretty significant restriction on your capacity to pursue them as well as.
There's no pursuit on them, at all, zero, absolutely zero.
And I think a lot of people don't understand that sometimes, they think they call the cops, and they don't understand why you're not going after them, and that's why.
Yeah, yeah, so, property crimes another, a reason to endanger even the offender's life, it doesn't, it doesn't fit our matrix of force, nor should it of, of any matrix of force out there. So we use, try to use other tools, the cameras, and people provide us information, whatever we can to identify the people on, on the vehicles if we can, so that's, that's how we go about that.
And a question.
Sure.
The fines that I laid out in this proposal, this ordinance, are they challengeable by the court? Because they seem kinda high, and just wondering how effective they will be.
Yeah, so if, if any ordinance, because we have our other ordinance with fines in our, in our charter here, in our, in our codes, if you don't, if someone refused to pay that amount, there's statute, there's a statute. if you don't, if someone refused to pay that amount, there's statute, there's a statute that we can use to now bring that to the state court. So that's, yeah, so, but those can be modified, those were similar to what is, has been or approved in towns around us. So I was trying to keep it uniform as a saying, so, that's where those came from.
I will add to that, that the damage to the property that we own is extensive. To the point where the department, you know, we had to do some major repairs, erosions happening now on it that we didn't have. It's gotten a lot worse in the probably last two years, Ben.
So when the arrest is made, are they responsible for the damage they've done to the property, or just the fine?
It's depending on, depends on the case, so it's a case-by-case basis. So if we can tie them to damage at that property, then they get charged as a criminal mischief, which, it's a municipality-owned property, which makes it a felony because it comes under criminal mischief second. It doesn't matter the cost, but it brings it up to a felony because it's owned by the town, then we tie them to that, and that's where we were seizing vehicles. If we catch them on the road and can't time to that property, then there's, there's no way for us to go back and charge them at that time.
And on private property, does the property owner have to personally bring charges, or?
No, they would just fall under a lower, depending on the cost of the damage, so it would, most of the criminal mischief statutes are misdemeanors, so that would usually be a misdemeanor, but they could recoup it at court sometimes, if the court chose to. If they didn't choose to, then they would have to civilly go after the individual. There's different avenues there, but the court has been pretty reluctant in my years to stand by that, so.
Mike, could I make a motion out of, pass this out today?
No, we have to have a public hearing.
No, you said we'd add it to the next, I'd prep it and add it to the next meeting agenda and be a motion to send it to the public hearing.
I think that consensus would be to do that.
Do you, you have a list of those kids?
We have a continuing list, some get older and move out of the area, and some step, we have some rising, as I call them, rising stars.
So you know who they are?
Not all, not all, we try to identify as most as we can, we use various tactics to try to do that, so. I couldn't stand before you and honestly say that we have every person that?
What happens now if you catch them on, like, I've seen them on twenty-two, what happens if somebody's going on a state road like that?
It's mostly motor vehicle charges at that point, but this would give us the ability to, to at least seize that vehicle. We could tow the vehicle, but we can't keep it, so it gets towed back to their house, so they pay a minimal fine. They plead not guilty, gets knocked down the community service at best case scenario.
Yeah, it's have to be towed back to their house.
Because I can't hold it, it's not my property, I can't seize it.
If you're, if you're pulling over somebody that's unregistered, aren't you, you're not towing that car back to their house? You're towing it back to the yard, aren't you?
No, no, not in the state of Connecticut, it doesn't work that way. Even if you're driving with suspended license, it still goes back to wherever you, it goes to the tow yard until you pay the fee, or it goes back to wherever they want to have it towed to. Some tow it out of town to another parking lot, they get out of the car and they jump in it and they drive, that's happened and then involved in other fatalities around the state, not from our department, but there's case law on that within the state of Connecticut, so.
Well, thanks, Deputy Chief, for clarifying that and giving us a quick summary, because anyone that's watching this program would gets a good idea of how it works, you know, what the process is or what the process is not, because most of us don't always know.
Absolutely, absolutely, anything we do to educate, so. And like I say, if you have questions, feel free to send them over, and we'll get you the answers even before you sit down and have to have that meeting, so. Or you can wait till the meeting, up to you, but.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Up to C, Mike? Yeah, I'm running behind.
Okay, next item is C, presentation by the town clerk, registrar, and voting this, obviously a decision coming from the state. It was important, I think, for the both registrar and clerk to come before you to explain it, and I think they presented with some documentation that they have, and I asked them to come forward. Thank you.
Yes, due to the current redistricting, we went from two voting districts to four voting districts because our senate district increased from, we had just originally senate district twelve. We gained the thirty-fourth district through part of the town, and it's more of the, along Totucket Road and further up into Northford, but it crossed both lines, it crossed District One and District Two, so automatically we now have four voting districts. We cannot change the two senate districts, the thirty-fourth and the twelfth, which are outlined on here. What we did was we showed you right now the four districts, the one B and the two B. Those are both the thirty-fourth senate districts, so we're not allowed to cross them, but we were, what we tried to do was, the assessor was wonderful, he helped us do this with time bond, because we were given of an overlay of a map without streets. I guess they go by the census tracking, so it didn't have streets or anything on it. So he overlaid it, sent it to time bond, and that's how we got the color-coded districts for you. Your first sheet, which shows the different voting districts, gives you a count, that's the number of houses located in each of the districts, not the voters. That's all we were able to do at this point, we just got this information at six, so, with the counts. So the count, the District one B, which is currently part of District One, has the twenty-two houses, but it equates to sixty-five voters. So we wanted to get the numbers to decide, because the only thing we can do locally is set the local voting districts. So if we moved one B, or kept one B and two B as a third voting district, and so we could switch it to three, how we, how we could do that and make that one B and two B now voting District Three, which would be, represent the thirty-fourth senate district, we need that little one B that has the sixty-five voters that now vote in District One to be moved to District Two. That's the only line we can move, is the local lines. So instead of four, we could now have three voting districts, that's why we're coming to you today, tonight, and then to explain the fact that it wasn't our fault, the state gave it to us, so we had nothing to do with that.
So where would be the, would, where would be the polling place? Could you keep it at one of the other polling places?
We could then keep it in the new voting District Three, since the majority of them already vote in District One at Stanley T. Williams, will then vote at Stanley T. Williams.
You'll just have it split inside?
Split, we can split, or we can, or we can create a third voting, a polling location if we so choose, or the registrar so chooses, that's not my jurisdiction.
But if we didn't, that's essentially what this would do, if we would leave it the way it is?
We have four.
We would essentially have, we'd have two locations, and then you'd have to split them once people showed up.
Correct.
You would make the determination of side they live in, give them a different colored ballot to try to keep them from having the problems that have happened.
Right, we would have to split two districts, if we went with the three, we only have to split one district.
So then we'd be able to do one district being split as opposed to both of them?
Correct.
Or do a completely third, separate polling location that's only for the thirty-fourth senate district?
Correct, and that would only come into play every two years. District One and District Two vote for the same people, it's this new District Three that has a different senate.
So I have a question, so the eighty-sixth district stays the same for?
Yes, we did not get split there this time.
That doesn't get split from North Branford and Northford, so the only thing that's getting split is the senatorial thirty-fourth and thirty-sixth.
Thirty-fourth, we have twelve, we added twelve and thirty-fourth.
Oh, thirty-fourth.
We had only twelve, we picked up thirty-four in this redistricting.
Okay, so we'll send it twelve now, and how many vote, how many houses are going to be in the voting district for the thirty-fourth district? Just the twenty-two houses?
No, twenty-two is in one B, there's nine hundred and sixty-six in two B, but I wasn't able to look at the voter registration and get, calculate the number of voters on that, there's too many.
It would make sense to me to move one B in with one, two B and make that a third district. Because you only have roughly sixty-five people in one B that would go up to?
And to further add to it, we don't have a lot of time, that's why we came tonight, because the town committee endorsements are coming up January fourth through the eleventh, and you choose town committees by district, both sides. So now you have to choose from three districts, or you could leave it this way, and you have to choose from four districts.
Makes sense to go to three and move one B to two B, I mean, you're only talking sixty-five voters in one B.
Right, it means sixty-five voters, which, once you enter them in, you'll notify.
Yeah, then we're going to have to.
Send out letters and let them know they vote not, no longer in Jerome Harrison, they will be voting next year at Stanley T.
Do you need a motion from us? Was there anything, there was nothing in our?
I know, I, we didn't know, we, I literally just got this at six o'clock, so.
Okay, so what, what do you want the motion to say?
I need you to make a motion to combine District one B with District two B, thereby townwide we would have three voting districts as opposed to four.
Creating three voting districts.
So the combination of one B and two B would now become voting District Three.
Right. But we don't currently have a one B and two B, right?
We automatically do. We automatically have these four because of the redistricting. We just, we called it one B and two B so that we knew this is Northward and this is North Branford, until I could see how many that we had to move, and it seemed to make more sense when we, you know, we just found out that we had sixty-five.
So one B and two B would be part of which senatorial district?
Would be combined, that's the thirty-fourth, that would be the thirty-fourth senate district, everybody else is the twelve. So we want to combine one B and two B to make District Three.
So if your motion should be specific to say it's for the senatorial district and not the house district?
Yes, it's for the.
That's why we need District Three for the thirty-fourth senatorial district.
Yes, you can include that.
Correct.
Well, we have to, we have to amend the agenda because it's not on the agenda at all, so. I will make a motion to add item thirteen E. I guess it's redistricted, to vote on redistricting.
Ball beaver?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Don't just blame the senate, though, because the redistricting committee is made up of equal parts of both the house and the senate, both parties, so, they're all to blame.
Where, technically, where was the thirty-fourth senatorial, what, what part of, how does that apply to us?
It's all North Haven, it's most of the.
It's North Haven?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And I think it might have, it has part of East Haven, too.
That's right. Right, but the thirty-fourth senate, the twelfth senatorial picked up the Morgan Point section along the water of East Haven as well, which it didn't have before. So the twelfth not only shed this part of Northford and North Branford, but it also took a tower-shaped piece of Middlefield, that just all, just went straight up in this weird configuration, and then moved out to East Haven. So instead of having five towns now, it touches seven towns.
Oh, okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a big thing.
So basically, on statewide, they didn't increase the number of senatorial districts, they just?
They just moved it around by population.
Moved it around, okay.
Which, you know, every time it's redistricting, we just hold our breath.
Listen, does it, does anything need to be said in the motion regarding where they will vote, or that will come later?
No, that will come, that will be, no, we will inform them.
But isn't it possible, because I know, you know, running before, if I went to the different towns, it was the same voting place, they just had a different ballot with the candidates on it, so they didn't provide a new facility, two or three candidates were in the same building.
You can split the voting district, okay. There are two schools of thought on that, as long as you can maintain very good control over your polling districts. You just don't want to make sure those ballots get mixed up, because that would mean, if we split District Two, which is what we intend to do, okay, one side votes for thirty-fourth senate, the other side votes for the twelfth senate.
Right.
We have to make sure that they get the correct ballots, which has happened.
It has.
You know, my, my big thing is color-code the ballots, we may not be allowed to do that, but then in talking to the registrar, I said, well, can we then code all the ballots and use separate tabulators? So therefore, District Three's tabulator will only accept District Three ballots, and if it doesn't, it spits it out, so then you move the person over if they don't catch them at the, it shouldn't happen really, because they should be on opposite sides, but.
You never know.
And you don't know, somebody could make a mistake.
The risk that happens, if you remember like in twenty eighteen in Stratford, that was what caused the issue, because there were seventy-six voters that went to Bonnell High School that got the wrong ballot. So they actually were voting for the wrong state representative candidate, and their ballots went through. So once they do that, there's no way to determine which of those ballots that were cast were the ones that were cast incorrectly. So that was what created the whole statewide issue, and some of these reforms that they're talking about, like having the machines unable to accept ballots during the color coding is always a result of that, yeah.
Because we do that now, even with the absentees, the EDRs, and the poll ballots, because we've been lucky, we, both districts always voted for the same people, but, so it didn't really matter, but to keep them separate because of recounts and audits, Iowa's color-coded them. Some people wouldn't, because every time you code it, it's an extra seventy dollars, I said, so what? For security, it makes sense to me, sometimes, I mean, they don't do that.
So if there were to be a third voting place, have you guys thought about where, what town, building?
Yeah, that's why we said we'll work on that, to see if we have any suggestions for that. Right now, it's probably better to just split the district, as long as we have control over the ballots, I have to get permission from the state. If not, then we can look to see if we can find another location.
Plus you have to hire more people to run the third polling place and parking and everything else, okay.
Well, we would probably still need to hire more people, because we'd need them on both sides, but we'll work it out, we'll make sure that it works for the voters.
So the schools are closed anyway on voting day here, and so if you vote at Stanley T., you have the other school right behind it. So you, that would be an option, and if you needed a bigger space, you could move everything, want, you know, your larger one to that one and have the smaller one at Stanley T., the number of people, because schools are closed on that day.
True, so there's an option, right, there are options. We'll, we'll make sure the integrity of the election is safe.
So, okay.
Thank you. Review and discussion on CIP?
Yes, item D, just a quick, brief memo and reminder that we need to wrap up the capital improvement plan. I've included the printout of those projects, and there's a few that we've discussed in the past, and whether or not the council wants to add any to the, to the list before we try to, try to wrap that up.
But we don't even have a cost on the NBIS roof yet, do we?
No, I don't believe so, no.
Not, not for the roof masonry, that's, that's, that's down the road, but it was just for illustration purposes, and as you know, we have a one-point-seven placeholder for the Stanley T. roof.
Right.
So, you know, again, it was just more of a conversational, bring it to your attention. Andrew, do we need the question tonight, or can it wait until the twenty-first?
So what number would we put in for NBIS?
I wasn't sure the timeline, if you wanted to start prior to June thirty. I know when school was ending, that was when they were going to start doing some of these schooltime projects, so technically puts it in this fiscal year.
Correct.
So I wasn't sure for both of those projects, and you're right, we have no firm numbers on either of them, so do we just forego those and then kick them off till twenty-two, twenty-three year, even though they want to start twenty-one, twenty-two? It's kind of that gray area, I'm not sure, I know we're hot to trot on them, but, right, we don't have firm numbers on either project.
Well, well, on the, the S T, I mean, on the NBIS, I mean, I don't know if the project can be split between the roof and the masonry work, since the roof is now part of the project, which originally it wasn't, it was just the masonry work.
Right, right, right.
So, like, if we put in a number for this current year, because I believe they have to do roof first before masonry, so. If we put in a number, and then we can always adjust.
You can always increase it next year.
For the masonry, because it's all one project.
Sure.
I mean, if we wanted to get it started.
Right, that's, that's the dilemma we're in, because they wanted to start after school ends this June, which is this fiscal year, but we don't have firm numbers on either NBIS or Stanley T. Williams, but I wanted to know if you wanted to put some kind of placeholder in there in twenty- Right, that's, that's the dilemma we're in, because they wanted to start after school ends this June, which is this fiscal year, but we don't have firm numbers on either NBIS or Stanley T. Williams, but I wanted to know if you wanted to put some kind of placeholder in there in twenty-one, twenty-two for both of those.
Maybe you can get some information from Rusty, since he's the architect on the NBIS thing.
Okay.
Is, can the project be separated?
Okay.
You know, first of all, can it be all done in one summer?
Okay.
I don't, I don't think so, because it seems like it's a very large project, and then, so do we have to separate it, or can the project continue into the fall when kids are there?
Sure.
So, I guess if we can kind of find that information out, and we had a number, a rough number of four-point-five.
That was only for the slope measure, that wasn't for the.
No, correct, that was, I mean, well, that was, four-point-five was the, the brickwork, when, when we got the origi, when we got a number originally from Rusty, that was before we even had the, the roof.
Right, 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 so you think four-point-five is a safe number to put in?
I, I don't know, because I don't know how much.
As a starting point?
I don't know how much the.
Rusty's right here in the hall, that's all, if you're familiar with him, why not?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, sure. If he's still here, I mean.
Besides those two big ones, anything else comes to mind?
Yeah, I have a question, isn't the library, isn't it reversed, wasn't it Smith Library that was approved and not Atwater's?
No, Smith was actually approved with last year's funds, Atwater's approved for this year's funds.
Oh, I see, okay, all right.
Yeah. Couldn't do both of them. Uh, again, most of those columns are locked in and accounted for, but was there, is there anything else that came to your mind, from a capital project perspective, that you wanted to, to list, even if it's not in this year, but maybe in twenty-two, twenty-three, three, four, or so on, other projects that came to mind? Because the process, the way it's got to work is, we got to send it to Planning and Zoning for an eight-twenty-four referral, and then it'll come back, so, but we're already halfway through the year, so many projects have already been done, to be a hundred percent honest with you, or at least started, so I just wanted to get the ball rolling, and we kind of typically do it in the September, October timeframe, but we kind of, with these other big projects in limbo, kind of didn't proceed down that path. What's that, Rusty, it's all you.
I'm sorry, um, so, when we added the, the roof to the project, you saw the new, the updated budget, and what we need to do is get the structural engineer to come up with the design in terms of what the impact is going to be on the existing structure. Once we do that, we'll concurrently then develop the budget for that, the impact, based on the, the gable roofs, the slope roofs. So, at this point, all we were looking for is, you gave us direction to do the roof replacement with the masonry, and you have that budget, and what we were looking for is the, the fee for the structural engineer to do his due diligence, so we can finish designing that component of the roof and put a budget together to provide to you.
So, in your estimation, can all of this work be done in one summer?
It may be difficult to do, because what we may have to do is, is in phases, because, you know, I just don't know, based on supply chain issues, this is not going to happen next summer, that, that, you know, is just, it's going to be very difficult.
Right. Oh. Well, that, that answers our question, then, so.
I mean, what we may do is just take a section that we think is the, is the, is the worst off and, and that, that's leaking, and try to address it that way, but the reality is, we've still got to design it, we've got to go through the bid process, and then the question of supply chain comes in in terms of insulation.
Okay.
So it might be possible, but I doubt it at this point.
Okay, that answers the problem.
That's for Stanley T. Williams also, without the same timeframe pertaining to it, or?
I was thinking, I mean.
Could you be, right, are you doing Stanley T. too, or no?
No, we didn't hi, we didn't hire anyone yet.
All right.
But that would be true, if you, because you don't even have an architect on, on board at this point, so you'll be.
Right. All right, so we're, we're talking next year, you have.
Okay, that, that answers, thank you.
Thank you.
So pending that, no, this project will be added, and I'll bring it back next time, kick it to Planning and Zoning, start the ball rolling that way?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, number nine, community events and presentations.
In our continuing quest to update the town website, tonight, we have before you Red Rover, they are the folks that do the Destination North Branford website, as well as some other ones that they have in your packet. We have Lauren on the Zoom, and who you met, some of you may have seen at other presentations, and Nick is here, gonna be, gonna be driving some of the presentations behind you on the projector, so if you want to turn around, you can see what he's gonna show for us.
Hi, good evening, everybody, thank you very much for inviting us here tonight, um, my name is Lauren Lysick, and my partner, that heads over into the right or left of the screen here, is Nick Green. We are partners at Red Rover Creative Studio, we're a North Branford ad agency, a marketing company, we've been in North Branford for a few years, and have had the very good fortune of working with economic development and some other people in the town to do some projects. We worked on the sunflower project, the pollinator pathways, and then created the Destination North Branford website at the direction of the EDC a few years ago. Anthony asked us to come in tonight to maybe give you a couple of thoughts about the current website, the municipal website, and we've done that, we put together kind of a very quick overview, assuming that maybe you would have some questions. Our thoughts were that we took some time and looked at some of the municipal websites, not only around the state of Connecticut, but nationally, and came up with a few thoughts for your consideration. One, that we kind of considered the, the concept of whether or not the website speaks to the audience other than a resident, and I think kind of our crux and our suggestion would be that the council consider that when you do send out an RFP, that we consider, uh, think about who the audiences are, audiences being plural, that the town would like to attract, uh, to come in for either business, a visitor, or a resident. So while the current municipal website is full of great information, and the links are certainly relevant to those of us who live here, we thought that maybe the council would consider at some point, uh, kind of broadening the, the reach to other audiences, in particular, businesses and visitors. Uh, I'm not sure if this is covering what you expected from a vendor this evening, so I'm hoping you can give me a little more direction, or if you have questions.
Doing good.
Yeah, I have a question, um, it says Destination North Branford, but I live in Northford, uh, the Ice Pavilion is in Northford, Honeywell is in Northford, shouldn't we consider having Northford part of something like where we're going? We do have a center in Northford, which has stores in it, there is land up there to be developed for commercial, so, um, when that, somebody asks me where I live, I say I live in Northford, I don't say I live in North Branford, because I live in Northford, we have our own zip code, so, um, if there's any way we could incorporate the section of Northford as part of North Branford, I think it would, would be, be good, too.
I, well, I, I, is that an answer, or is that a question, I'm sorry, for us, or to the council in general?
Well, the council has to approve this, right, so, it's just a thought that I have, um.
It's good, it's good.
I live in Northford, I live in a village of Northford.
I'm in the North Branford, though, Northford is part of Northford.
It's the village of Northford.
In the town.
The town of Northford.
Right, right, it's the village and the town of North Branford.
There's always going to be separatists like them.
Well, you know, we want to be a certain town.
I'm from Northford, I grew up there, but, you know, I mean, I understand that, you know, when you, when you do a website like that, I mean, uh, I think it's, I think it's fine to have Northford featured on this, you could say North Branford, Northford on it, but it's the North Branford moniker, I don't think that makes much of a difference. I think when we're looking at a, a new website for the town, I think what we're really looking for, uh, in addition to the branding for the town that we want, because we are marketing to different audiences, and it is going to be ultimately part of marketing the town, but it also has to incorporate user design functionality and ease of user application, so most people are going to come there, and they're going to want to pay their taxes. So it should be easy, one step, they shouldn't have to navigate five pages to figure out how to pay online, uh, if they want to know what's happening in a town, they shouldn't have all these confusing click-throughs to get through to us, so it really has to be about making it easy for someone who is looking for the information to find the predominant amount of information that most people go to a municipal website about, there's only a certain number, it's like three or four things that most people go to it for, and all the cursory stuff is, you know, secondary. So, um, one question I have for you, and I don't know if you've ever designed anything like, you know, a municipal website like this before, but one of the chief features that many of them have are, um, you know, an alert system, so like the little concierge bell, and then you'll be able to, um, do these things.
I can't quite hear you.
Can't hear me.
So Nicholas, could you, could you, first of all, Nick, could you put the website on the homepage, but also, would you repeat the question for me?
Sure, so, many municipal websites will have something like a concierge bell or something on there that you could either report an issue, so, you know, we can have, like, a pothole get reported, like, Qsend was one of the companies that came in here, I'm familiar with them, they have the Qalert system, it's proprietary to them, um, I'm familiar with that, have you ever worked with anything like that, and, or designed anything like that?
No, and, you know, I think to some extent, our limitation is, we haven't worked with any municipal websites, and I think that that's both a liability for us, and it's an asset, so I think it's an asset in that, in all of the websites that we looked at, both those around the shoreline in Connecticut and nationally, I was a little surprised that we aren't really looking at municipal websites that are speaking to visitors and businesses, meaning, we're speaking to residents, we're talking about, you know, the appropriate links, government type of information, or information that's relevant to people who live in the town, or not, we're not talking to anybody who might come to the town to visit, which is, which is surprising, or if they do have that information, it's varied. So some of the things, I, I think what you were just talking about, like, see, click, fix, and, you know, those are third-party integrations that are pretty easy, usually, we design in WordPress, um, anything above WordPress, like if we had to go into Drupal, or something that's more complex, I don't know that we would be the right vendor for the project. I think that in addition to kind of making your, the website look a little bit more updated, so maybe it doesn't have to look certainly like Destination North Branford, again, that was an EDC-directed site, but I think, obviously, I think we would all agree that updating the graphics would probably be helpful, you know, maybe taking some of that, some of the links off the homepage and pushing that navigation out, like we see on the Destination North Branford page, we basically have three main, you know, audience links, visitors, businesses, and residents. I think the other part of, of what I think, I think would be important for an RFP going forward, is how we're going to manage content, and to some extent, that's a little bit touching on what you're asking, you know, how are we going to make it so that once the site is finished, somebody or some organization can update information that we get throughout the town? The challenge that we already see right now, in particular with the EDC, since that's who I usually work with most closely, is, you know, they're doing great things, absolutely fantastic things that we do in our town, all, across all the departments, the challenge is getting it up on the website or on social media in a way that we can maintain a consistency and a visibility that, you know, makes the town, uh, kind of rise above the, the fold, so to speak, and when, and, and comparing other towns where it's more of like a static site, it's, uh, it, the site, site just shows you what resident links are available. So I, we don't have experience working with some of the proprietary municipal, uh, third-party integrations, if they were, if those integrations would require something more complex than WordPress, I don't feel like we'd be the right fit.
Okay, fair enough. And that does kind of go, you've got a little bit ahead of me, but that is sort of where I was going to go, which is the idea of continuing management of the system, because if you've developed it.
Right.
Obviously, you're either going to have to turn it over to somebody here who is going to operate the site and manage content, or you would have to have a continuing contract to do that for us.
Well, I, you know, and I think our thoughts, not to get too far down into, you know, drilling down into what we would, would actually pitch for the, in particular, the RFP, but, you know, the, it doesn't, it's, it's just not going to really solve all of our problems to make the current site look good, you know, we have to make it so that it's easier to upload information, so that the, the North Branford web, websites, or, you know, whatever, how pages, however you want to refer to them, so that they represent the, quite frankly, extraordinary work that gets done throughout the town, you know, whether it's somebody right now raising money for the owner of Good Vibes, or the nutrition, the place where she just lost her house, I mean, all the things that our town comes together and does as a community, a lot of times, that kind of, you know, it, it kind of burbles around on the Facebook groups, but, uh, you know, I think it has a, I think it has a place on the town website. We did create, um, by, uh, the, the, uh, the community page called Local is Good, Nick, if you, if you could just click on the Facebook feed for that? So what we've been doing in the last year is mainly focusing on a new, uh, or a new group, a new, uh, business entity called Local is Good, and the Local is Good is mainly going to be the, kind of, the, the events, and the notices, et cetera, for the town, are you able to find it, Nick?
I'm getting it.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I meant, if you could click on the Facebook feed, showing all the posts.
Ah, sorry.
That's right, so I, so what we're doing as part of Local is Good slash North Branford, and we are posting every day, um, talking about some of the businesses in town, or something that's relevant, and, you know, showing that on the webpage keeps it kind of updated and, and, uh, relevant. So I think that the answer, I think that the municipal website is, addressing, is not the whole problem, so to speak, and I think where we would probably have some strength is that we are familiar, you know, with the town, we've worked with people within the town, we're very deep in marketing, we're very good at marketing communications, uh, certainly very deep in website development, but not with municipalities. So even though I think, Nick, are we, I can't see this already showing the Facebook page.
Yeah, yep. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. So kind of addressing your, your point, and again, I'm not quite sure if this is what you wanted us to give to you tonight as a vendor, but we would look really at trying to suggest, let's come up with a communications plan, let's kind of come up with a, how are we going to post information, where should it go, what's the best place for it, should it go on the municipal site, should it go on a Facebook page? And I think that's kind of all a part of the piece of improving the municipal site, I think the current site is, you know, for the information piece of it, I think it serves its purpose, it's just doesn't have the hook and feel, probably, that, that I, that you want, and I think it only speaks to one audience.
That brings up, uh, to dovetail on Lauren's point, that was a comment that I made to the prior council, yeah, I, I think communications, whether it's the website, or Facebook, or Twitter, is how the world communicates now, and I think we're at that point in North Branford where we need somebody, people are doing it kind of haphazardly, doing eight different other things, oh, by the way, update the website, update, you know, no one's, so we really need a communications person, whether it's a part-time job, starting out, or whatever, and I, I think if we do this year's budget coming up, we should really explore that, no one wants to hire anybody, but because, as Lauren had mentioned, you know, whether it's new business coming into town, or residents, or our Twitter feed that gets updated once every probably six months, or our Facebook page that doesn't update it at all, it, it's the way the world communicates now, and we're really falling behind by not doing that properly, and it, as, as Mike mentioned, that, that's how, you know, it's, it's the representation of the town, and if we don't do it, there's nothing worse than going to a website and finding stale information, and it just tells you you don't really care about it, and you got to make your best foot forward, because it could be a, a new resident that wants to move into town, or new business wants to come into town, or just our own, our own citizens and residents, and we're really kind of falling flat on that. And, you know, in talking with Deputy Chief, his website's also due for an update, so this process, once we get to the RFP stage, will be, at least for the town website initially, and then also the police department website, to get those both more user-friendly, more pertinent information and such, so I, I think, and, and the same communications person, you know, given, if they get clearance, and the police department can update those websites as well, and those, you know, Jimmy does a great job with, with their, their Facebook page, is constantly putting things out there, but from the town's perspective, we're, we're really slacking on that, and I think we need to resolve that, so as, as Lauren had mentioned, that, we're not hitting all the target audiences, we're not hitting any of them, quite honestly, well. So, I, I think, and, and the same communications person, you know, given, if they get clearance and the police department can update those websites as well, and those, you know, Jimmy does a great job with, with their, their Facebook page, is constantly putting things out there, but from the town's perspective, we're, we're really slacking on that, and I think we need to resolve that. So as, as Lauren had mentioned, that, we're not hitting all the target audiences, we're not hitting any of them, quite honestly, well, we're hitting them all bits and pieces, and I think we'll need to address that going forward, and, uh, maybe put a part-time communications person in there that's gonna update all our social media platforms, and our website, and things like that, and, and really bring us to the forefront and get things, we're gonna spend a lot of money in the next six months to a year updating our website, and then if we don't maintain it, we've just basically wasted money. So it's kind of, it goes hand in hand. We're gonna update the website, whether it's, you know, facelift, or some functionality things that, as Lauren had mentioned, if we don't have anybody in the backend that's gonna maintain it properly, it's all, it's all for naught.
Right, but isn't, isn't part of the reason that, um, websites commonly don't get updated is because they become, um, unmanageable, because things are built on top of other files, and, and things get more complicated, outdated, never updated?
There's different, there's different.
There's that, and then I look at this, and I say, well, yeah, we can have, why couldn't you just have a website similar, similar to the look of, you know, if a resident goes to a, to a town website, they're looking for, you know, residential types things?
Right.
You know, taxes, and whatever. And if you wanna have a link to Facebook, you have a link to Facebook, you wanna have a link to
Right.
Uh, visiting, you know, visitor information, you have a link to visitor information.
Right, but still, because somebody's gotta update that Facebook page.
Right.
And put those, even if it's as simple as a press release, town hall is closed tomorrow for Veterans Day.
Right, because it's not, right, I, I get it, it's not plug and play.
No.
There's maintenance that goes with it.
Right, I mean, the WordPress is, is a common tool that some of the other vendors that came before, the prior council had used, that they're gonna do WordPress as a way to maintain their websites. There, there's two schools of thought for those that are, that are new. You either have smaller players that use a WordPress or other tools like that, that we can maintain ourselves pretty readily, and a lower cost, or you have these vendors like the Qsend, or, I think coming next week is gonna be Civic Plus, another large player, bells and whistles, great websites, but you're gonna pay big money. And again, it goes back to, if we're gonna pay big money, but not maintain it on the backend, then we're just wasting money. So, again, there, there-
And, and, you know, let me just jump in, the other issue with that is some, a lot of the big sites are using proprietary software.
Correct.
They're using, they're using their code, and when it's not an open source, open source code like WordPress, that means any little change that you wanna make, you have to hire a programmer from them, because it's their code, and you are going to be spending a lot of money
Correct.
Uh, make the con, the, the simplest of changes. So generally, and interestingly, I think one of the sites I sent you was Riddle Cody. Riddlecody.org was a site that originally, the, before we came in, was created in using Drupal, and they spent an obscene amount of money on the website, and we ultimately threw it all away and just put it on WordPress. Why? Because they were a small charity, and for them to pay a programmer to just do even minor updates, you know, you look at, on Destination North Branford, there's a section in for, uh, community projects. So if you wanna add a community project, you know, you can do that in WordPress in an afternoon, but if you use something that's proprietary, like some of the larger organizations, it's just, it's gonna look really great, and it, and I, and I think they do look great. The challenge, though, is, um, it doesn't have a lot of customized, it doesn't have a lot of ability to be customized, because you're kind of using a template, and when you actually then do want any customization, you have to, you have to pay a lot of money for it, you're gonna pay a programmer.
Sure.
To the, to your point, um, about maintenance, that should be, um, I think, part of the RFP. You know, any vendor who builds the site really should, especially if it's in WordPress, it's just, this is just monthly webmaster work that they should offer to just at least keep the site going. And then also, you should have something on the site that makes it easy for people in the town to upload information. You could easily have a form, um, or, you know, create something, something so that if you upload, and it's a, it becomes what's called a post, and the post is categorized correctly upfront, the post would automatically go to the correct page, whether it be for the audience of a visitor or a resident, or both, whatever. So I think that, um, when we talk about what we, what you, your vision for the municipal website, we have to go, I think, a little bit beyond just the website, and push more into communication, functionality, maintenance, because otherwise, you're gonna, you know, build something that's big and beautiful, and it's just gonna sit there.
Correct.
So I mean, I would just add, sorry to interrupt you, but that, our, our website's just as atrocious as, as the one incident we were talking about before, and that's saying it violently, and I think you'd be nice in saying that we've failed, and I think we've already failed, to be honest with you. Um, I think the website should have been there ten years ago, if not more. I would just urge you to, to also possibly consider that, um, when you go to pick a company, but a company that has maybe has some experience with an app-based, because most people are cell phone, they're not going to a website, they're gonna be more cell phone, app-based, that's what, uh, communities across the country have already done, especially law enforcement out west, and has already moved on to the east coast, but, um, that's, that's, I think, something that comes from like-
Right, I mean, you're right, I mean, there's like eighty percent of people that are gonna go to our website, are gonna be using our mobile device, so it would have to be, you know, it would have to be mobile functional, like fully functional. I think if you go to our website now on a cell phone, you get like, you know, it looks like something from, you know, nineteen eighty-five, like pixelated, so, because it doesn't, it doesn't work, it's, it's meant from a, it's from a previous incarnation. But, to the point you're making about, I told, first of all, personally, I think you can't understate the importance of doing this and doing it right, and integrating, uh, the marketing aspect with this. You know, a website in my mind for the town is supposed to be a central online hub, and it should integrate all of our social media outlets, and it should be a way to cross-pollinate all sorts of information about what's going on in the town for the town residents. I think the one thing I wanted to ask you about was, when you talk about a, one of these larger companies like Qsend, that has the-
I'm sorry, I can't quite-
Yeah, when you, when you talk about one of these companies like Qsend, that has the proprietary, um, content management, um, one of the things that they do, like, with them, I know they offer training, so they'll train up, you know, certain staff members to be able to use their proprietary content, so you can get around that to some degree, but it, but it's complicated, so, and it's not something that everybody can do, especially if they've already got another job. But one of the things that they offer, and I'm wondering where you are on this, in terms of their managing the site, is cybersecurity.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, cybersecurity?
Yeah.
So, if you use a WordPress site, there's a lot of holes in WordPress that would concern me because of some of the plugins sometimes, if they get outdated, and if we allow too, if we proliferate too many people having access to build pieces of the town's network, you are opening cybersecurity holes
Yes.
That they're not aware of. So how would you address that with, uh, your presentation?
So that's a good question, and I think that kind of goes back to that concept of whoever is going to create the site, it can't just be that, you know, they bring in the A-team, they pitch, they get the, they get the work, and then the C-team builds the site, and then they go away. Because the proud, you know, the challenge with WordPress, and quite frankly, a lot of systems, even proprietary ones, are, and they require, uh, at monthly updates, they require what's called a webman tester to oversee the site and make sure that there aren't holes in it, that the plugins are functioning properly, that they're all updated. So really, the challenge, um, isn't much different, whether it's a municipal website or a charity website, you know, a data or a, a security breach, whether it's data or e-commerce, it's the same, all, you know, all the way around, and I think the only way to solve that is you must have somebody with, you know, eyeballs on the site weekly, quite frankly. I mean, we, we don't have, we don't purposely right now, because we're focusing and have focused in the last year on Local is Good, so we keep our websites low, and we use a service that manages and monitors websites constantly, whether, whether or not they're up or down, whether the site is crashed, whether they, we have spamers, or, you know, anything. Obviously, some of this is our, it's automated, and some of it just requires a human being to look at it. So, I think that there are some third-party integrations, I, I'm not positive, it looks like on the current website, there might be some third-party integration for how you'll update, uh, or add minutes for a meeting like this. Um, so those are some things that, if, you know, once we got to the RFP level, we would dig deeper in that to make sure that that's gonna be a good and a safe integration with something like WordPress. But I think it's kind of, you know, let me just throw out this other thought. You know, if you're gonna go from a current site the way you have it right now with a municipal site, and let's say you embrace the idea that, that we want to branch out and talk to two more audiences, we wanna really focus on, you know, not only residents, but businesses and visitors. The thought is, and this is kind of what we've seen in the past with our other clients, is that if you go with a really expensive proprietary software, when you're trying to figure out what your navigation is, who your audience is, it's just gonna cost you a lot of money. It probably would be smarter for you to kind of take a tech, you know, tack, and go in a different direction, but use something that's really easy to use, scalable, like WordPress, where you can have, uh, really quick access to it and updates, et cetera, by many people, not just us, it's a common, it's a very common website development tool. If you go from what you have right now to a very high-end or a, a customized something like Drupal or proprietary software, and then you decide, well, you know, we don't really like that idea, we, we wanna change the audience, or we wanna add an audience, or we wanna do this, well, then you, now you're gonna be in a more kind of expensive space than if you do it maybe in stages, where you take the current website, jump maybe to a simpler platform like WordPress, see what you like for a year, obviously making sure that security and other issues relevant to making the, the site safe are covered. And then if you, once you get to something that you really like from a navigation, navigation and hierarchy and a, you know, just a functionality, then you could move to a really, a high-end platform. Just a thought, just wanna throw it out there. Because we did see, and again, it's the Riddle Cody site, where they, they were a startup and went to Drupal on startup, and the problem was, they weren't really sure what they wanted. As they kept trying to change things and move things around, it became so expensive that they finally had to just scrap using it. You could maybe flip that, take that and, and start, you know, segue into WordPress and then go into something that's a little more proprietary.
Thanks, Lauren. Any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the time, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Lauren.
Yes?
Excuse me, do we, do we have a list of all the, all the companies you have brought in or are bringing in?
Yeah.
Do we, we have the list?
Uh, I have a list, I can, I can give you to the next agenda, yeah. There's one more coming in next time, Civic Plus, uh, they're one of the larger players, uh, but I'll give you the whole list of the folks that came in so far.
All right, thank you. Okay. Uh, item ten, citizen statements and petitions and correspondence?
Chair, I, I have some comments to make, or now, or later, except for you, I wanna read an hour later.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, uh, first one is that, uh, Mayor Bob is watching. Uh, second one, the broadcast is horrible, it keeps stopping and losing. Uh, the next one, Melissa Giovanni says, uh, Mary Duvain says, hi. During the school commentating, Shauna, holder of the Board of Ed Chair, asked why wasn't Rusty commenting? Antonio Giuseppe commented, spend the money, put the school back together, and do away with the silly idea of a new school, is more trouble than it's worth, and way too expensive, than you want a disabled fixed-income person to pay for. Uh, Bob Whitworth, who's on the building committee, said, burn, burn the project building meets every Monday night, come and see how the sausage is made. Uh, Antonio then replied, these meetings are a joke, those meetings are a joke. Uh, Shauna Holter then replied, why are, about, this is about the COVID, why are the severity, what are the severity of the symptoms positive really is not a true indicator of severity? Uh, Bob Whitworth replied again, replying to Anthony, Antonio, you are welcome to attend and offer your comments or suggestions to the committee, he then replied, we're carried, let's move on. Um, where do you pay your taxes, Antonio asked? Kenny Asher, the town, right, that goes back to the comments, the town in North Branford, Antonio said bingo. A lot of comments tonight, just. Then, uh, Mark Lilly asked if the Destination North Branford website has been submitted to Google for search crawling. Uh, Cara Caroline asked, why not an application or an app, that most businesses are moving to apps, because website's becoming obsolete, also a contractor, a person for web development and media. Uh, Mary Alyssa Giovanni then replied, you have a Local is Good website up for months, you have only fifty followers, people do not look at websites much, kind of goes back to the comment, trust me, people ask on Facebook, mine's bulk trash, this several times a day, the info is in the town website, they aren't looking there. They look for community groups, the community run Facebook groups, thousands of members. Randy Little then replied, our town website is cluttered and needs a facelift. Mary Giovanni said, I think that's a great idea, most people would use it as long as they know it exists, seniors probably know, but they probably don't look at the website either. Cara then replied, yes, the website is difficult, you need somebody savvy managing it, and WordPress is so outdated. Kevin Sampson says, we need a nice town green. Antonio Giuseppe said, sounds like a job for the town miniature. Uh, Kevin Sampson then said, a nice gathering area. Melissa Giovanni said, the town website needs update, clean it up, but do not invest time into it or money. Basic info is what is needed on the main page, easy, make it easy for you to find. If you wanna engage the community online about more community enrichment ideas, residents are doing just, need somebody who is active on social media to run it, and on Instagram for younger adults, or on Facebook. Cara Caroline says, we should do a survey with the tax bill and find out what people are using, then decide, why would you build anything without having that data? That's it so far.
That, that's it?
So far. They're active tonight.
Yeah, okay.
That's good.
All right. Uh, there's no resignations and appointments, so we'll move to item twelve. Um, item A, we're just gonna maintain on there, Mike?
Right, yep.
Um, same thing for item B, so we'll move right to item C, review and approval of bid specification. Uh, RFQ slash P number three, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, roof replacement, architectural services for STW Community Center.
Right. Yeah, last meeting, Counselor Angeloni had indicated that we did have the wrong placeholder mount for the, for the project, and also that it is not an OCGR project, it's going through OPM, uh, so we've made those changes, and, uh, looking for approval to send this out, hoping still, keeping our fingers crossed that this hits, this project hits the State Bond Commission agenda. Um, I'm, you know, in tune with our Representative Vincent Candelora, and I'm sure he will tell me when he hears.
Yeah, the Bond Commission meeting for December has been postponed, and now it's January, so-
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the latest information as of today, so, but we can still move this along, so we can have some kind of an idea.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve RFQ slash P number three, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, roof replacement architectural services for the STW Community Center.
Second. Give it to Marie.
Okay. On the second lady.
Yeah.
Such a gentleman. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Going into new business, um, A, award of lights for STW pro, uh, project through the cooperative purchasing agreement, Sourcewell, contract number zero seven one six one nine, MSL expiration oh eight twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three.
Right, and, Mr. Chair, if we could just pause there for a second, I think, I, I just wanna check the phone, I know Ron was on, but I heard a beep, I, I think maybe, uh, Mayor McMillan, are you on?
I am here.
Okay, great, I just wanted the clerk to know that we now have both Mayor McMillan and Counselor Policia on the phone for the record. And, uh, Mayor, we are now on, uh, item thirteen A.
Thanks for the follow along, although the feed is somewhat difficult.
Thanks for the follow along, although the feed is somewhat difficult.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion pursuant to section 84-12 of our purchasing ordinance. The town council hereby approves the purchase agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC through Sourcewell bid number 071619 for $115,621.
Second.
Did you get that?
I did.
Any discussion?
I just have a question for Justin. So, once this is approved, when can they start this project? Like, now? They can do this in the wintertime?
Yeah, they should be able to do it in the wintertime.
Okay.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to the next one. B, discussion in action on approving locations for the new North Bramford Police Department building project?
For, for the, for purposes of discussion, I'd like to make a motion. After a thorough review and evaluation of the following three properties, 1599 Foxen Road, 298 Forest Road, and 305 Forest Road, the town council hereby approves and authorizes the permanent project building committee to proceed with the development of the new North Bramford Police Department at, I haven't have it right. Is it the 305, correct? 305 Foxen Road.
No, not Foxen.
Of course.
Forest Road, I meant to say.
Somebody's house is getting destroyed. So, as long as it's on Forest Road, I second you.
Get that.
We spent a lot, a lot of time in hopes of this. I can't pull up anything, so I'm doing my best. Yeah, I'm sure it'll be there. Marie and Bruce.
Yeah, Marie and Bruce.
Okay, thank you.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
So, you're one of the guests of the TND website, Web Network.
Guest.
They're having a problem. For some reason, the guest website's not picking up the Dropbox account. So, I'll put down the other ones.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, and anyway, it's asking me for money for the, for the Dropbox too, and I'm like, wow.
Yeah.
I think I'm just going to have to start dropping a back off.
Keep going?
Yeah.
C, request from the project, permanent project building committee for additional contingency funding for North Bramford High School building project.
Okay, so I'm just going to make a motion to get it on the table so we can do discussion. I'd like to make a motion to, in, to allocate additional funding for the owner contingency in the amount of $4,089,605.
Strengthen discussion, yes?
Yes, it's, we.
Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Abelson.
Okay.
Are those numbers separated? Because it won't be reimbursable?
We have to separate both numbers.
Yeah, so I just want to pull up the minutes, if you don't mind.
That memo, the, the email you have from Marnie does separate out, in terms of the, you have just stated the full number, $4,089,605.
Okay, so you want me to amend it to say, how much is the 5% and how much is?
Right, for contingency and, and over.
I don't know yet.
I think it's, yeah, okay, we have it here.
Okay, got it.
Okay. So I'm just going to amend the motion. So, the motion is for a total of $4,089,605 with $3,312,120 as the contingency, the 5% owner contingency, and $777,486 as the contingency overage.
I would second. Point of, point of information, is it 277-486-10 or 777-108-10? Which one, which one of the ones is that?
I'm, I'm looking at the email that was sent.
Okay, I'm looking at this.
Oh, page 86 on the agenda?
Yeah.
Ben?
I got it. All right, 777-486-10, okay. Well, that's just, that's different from what's on the sheet that they handed out. Okay.
Do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
You got that?
No.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, do you have?
Who made it and who's second?
Yes, I have that.
Okay.
Fall in favor?
Well, is there any discussion? I mean, I, because it was put on the floor for discussion purposes, so, does anyone have any questions that they want to ask, or did we cover it all under their presentation?
I think the permanent project building committee's made it pretty clear and made it, made us understand what needs to be done.
So where is this money coming from, Anthony?
That's what I was going to talk to you about.
Because, because we haven't bonded.
Well, well, we're not going to bond until the end, obviously, the final number. So, we have a couple of different options. We can go back to Glenn Santoroff, Robinson Cole, and have them amend their bond resolutions for this additional amount, to give us the ability to bond if we, if we so choose. We have that $4 million sitting out there, just dying to be used for ARPA money. We have fund balance that's rich. We could take it out of there if you so choose. We have a couple of different options. So, in talking to Mike, we'll come back next meeting with what the final project cost we have at this point is supposed to be. And then we can float three different options for it. If you want to go back to have the bond resolutions amended for the higher amount, that at the end of the day, when we finalize the numbers, we could bond it. Or do you want to use a combination of ARPA and fund balance? All fund balance? You have a couple of different options. We're at a pretty good, you know, point in life right now in North Bramford, so just throw that out there. But that's a valid point. You know, where does this additional money come from? We don't have any, you know, cans in the backyard we're going to dig up. So, we got to figure out what we're going to do, how to do it. So we have a couple of different options, how to, how to, how to skin that cat. So, I'll work with Mike. We'll get some, some thoughts together for the next meeting and come back with some suggestions.
All right. Thank you, Anthony.
Well, I mean, we're just, we're just approving money here without knowing where it's coming from or what we're doing. I mean, we just, we just keep printing it like the federal government, I guess, but I don't know, we have that ability.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Yep.
And a second?
Yep. Any other discussion?
Do you want to roll call, vote, or?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
If, if, you know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. D, stove replacement at the community center?
Okay, Anthony, so how should this?
This would, well, the.
Motion read, so that, like.
Just, I'm sorry. The only question that is being raised is when will the funds be available? Because we have alternatives that will expire, and we have to roll together. I don't know when, when the funds will be available.
You got funds now?
Yes.
Yeah, what?
According to, well, the paperwork is, and what we're looking, we have, we have enough money contingencies to use.
Right.
Right, but.
But our, so that's not the issue. The other, we have the money to continue, so we have time. That's not the issue. The other issue is if we can expedite, and Marnie and her boss are here, but Marnie's not here, but her boss is here, we are working diligently, according to my qualis, I use your word, diligently to actually expedite to try to get our money back, since we've been working there for like five, six months, to get finalized all the paperwork. We have two, two and a half million dollars.
For reimbursement.
For reimbursement, so it'll lighten our road a little bit. We'll balance our costs out.
Working with the state of Connecticut, there's just, there's an issue with the state. The project is not listed on the website for us to add a payment request for. And the girl, Michelle Dixon, at the state is working to get it resolved for us. That's not very resolved.
As far as using monies we have, like, as Kenny said, and cash we have.
We have cash.
Personally, from a construction standpoint, I would probably hit the bond first. And then whatever monies we don't use later, just pay off down on the bond. Because it's cheaper right now than using our own money.
Correct. We have money.
Just gave you $4 million.
Just gave you. That's an interesting question, because how, how do you word it for the six or the 10? Or do you say pursuant to competitive pricing that is, you know, got by Recreation Director? I'm not sure how you want to word it, but it'll be a contingency appropriation, maybe for not to exceed 10,000. And then we'll come back with the results of the, her.
Do we have to classify it as an emergency, so that?
Yes, I don't know the chapter. There's a section in the town code off here. I can dig it up. If you need me to look for it quick. Do you have it in hand, Counselor?
Page 84, chapter 84, but I, I don't know that it's going to fall within the, defer to then on the emergency definition, but I, I think, I think there's still good, good reason to believe we can, we can get off with a state.
We can't go off state, but. We are going off state, yes.
Yeah.
Or it's national.
So it's not, not emergency.
So it's not an emergency.
We'll just, we'll just expedite off a state as quickly as possible.
Right.
Yeah.
Not to exceed 10,000 out of contingency, and we'll come back with the final numbers at the next meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before we do this, can she get the bids first before we decide on how much we're going to spend? I know it's between $6,000 and $10,000, right? But can't we get the numbers first before we sit there?
Well, we don't meet for two weeks.
Right, I think she has a Christmas luncheon.
And she has the big Christmas luncheon next Friday, a week from Friday. We don't meet for two weeks, and then it would have to get installed. She'd have to order it and get it installed.
Are they available?
It's a question I have in her back room, Fender's.
So you don't know if you can even get it?
I don't. I don't. The model that I particularly want, I don't want to put in something that's not going to last. There is a model I can get next week that's in stock, but I, I don't want to.
And how much is that?
What?
How much is that one?
That one was almost $4,000. I don't know if that includes the piping. They originally sent me a cold front ice machine, so I'm hesitant to work with this vendor.
So you, basically, installation's about $3,000, approximately?
Approximately with the piping, that's what it seems to be.
Okay.
It's a valid point, though. Typically, you want to have the numbers in hand before you make an.
I, I understand, absolutely.
I think time is of the essence with the pending Christmas luncheon and everything else, so.
They think they're.
Right.
No.
I would say not to, contingency appropriation not to exceed 10,000.
Upon approval of the town council.
No.
No, because you're going to approve it, you're approving it tonight. We're going to buy it tomorrow, theoretically.
Right, not till we see 10,000.
Not to exceed 10,000. Okay, without the approval, I got you.
Without the approval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If something crazy comes in.
Right, 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 then come back.
It's $10,001.
Right.
She can't say, oh, it's only a bug. She has to come back to the town. No, that's all I'm saying. Just to protect our.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. That makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Perfect sense.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for a contingency appropriation not to exceed $10,000 for a new stove for the Stanley T. William Community Center with, it's coming from the state contract. Second.
Yeah, so it'd be state or national consortium pricing.
Okay, state or national consortium pricing.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Yeah, I just have self scribble here. Okay, now we're on 13E, the combination of one, or the, the voting, the redistricting, the voting.
Okay, so Lisa Valenti was kind enough to write up the motion. I'd like to make a motion to combine districts 1B and 2B into District 3 to create one voting district for the 34th Senate District due to the state redistricting plan.
Second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Citizen statements?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of more. Tara Malillo, this is regarding the police station vote. Ridiculous, why are you putting the police department in the middle of five homes? Do you care what you're doing to the property value at all? Why put it in the most expensive place of all locations? Is, is it the lot that was cleared without sewer? That was Cara Caroline. Tara Malillo, who wants to look at the backyard of the police department? I know I don't, but none of you live over here, so you don't care. It's the most ridiculous thing the town has done. Cara Caroline said, is the lot they cleared interesting? What was the evidence they used? I'm not sure what that refers to. Tara Malillo said, basically, it's next to my driveway. Hopefully, the files, the files across from the pit on Cornwestville, they have to pay to get rid of material, they have to move the road that leads to the town garage. It's a ridiculous waste of money we don't have. Cara Caroline then replied, okay, so they're willing to pay the additional cost. They seem to be overflowing with money. I feel for you. Tara Malillo then said, then they will have, well, and septic, I'm so disgusted with all of this. Who puts the police department in the middle of a field surrounded by homes? And I'm taught that they will practically be in my front yard. Tara Malillo, apparently, North Bramford has made us money, and now I'm going to be able to sell my house. Antonio Giuseppe then replied, as long as taxes keep going up, North Bramford will never be broke. Cara Caroline then replied, never say never. I think once they do landscaping, et cetera, it won't be as bad as the assumption. Cara Caroline, but that isn't ideal. Tara then said, come on, Anthony, read my comments. Sorry, it's not about the town website.
Is that it?
Uh, yes, sir.
Flip Potter, Northford, Connecticut. Benny, I'll put the one buck down in case it goes over. $10,000. I've got $10,001 covered. I want to give you guys atta, boys, because I was here for the workshop that night. And those of you who were not here, it's okay. I'm not mad about that, believe me. I'm easygoing. I was pretty discouraged when I walked out of here. But guess what? The people that were here stepped up, put their heads together, and came up with a solution on their own time when the meeting was over, and did the town business. Now that is something you can be proud of, really. It's going to work. You guys have got breath, you've got life, a heartbeat. We're moving forward in a nice direction. I want to give these guys some recognition, recognition. They're called, what do you guys call yourself? The Permanent Project Building Committee. I want to call them the permanently, permanent, permanently penalized billing committee. They have donated so many hours and gone through so many facts, and it's not over yet. It's actually just starting, I believe, for them. The real headaches are yet to come, I believe, right? But they don't give up. They keep coming back, and that's a good thing. We've got some really talented businessmen. They know what they're talking about. They're experts in their fields. I wish I had doctors as smart as their practice as these guys are in what they do. They know how to save you money. I mean, it made perfect sense. Get the damn stuff off the roof, put it on the ground, and the roof will stay lighter, and it won't get broken, and we won't be looking for new roofs in 10 years. You know what? When you do the job for a living, you bring so much expertise to the table. And I'm glad to see they brought so much. And they care. They're worried about the dollars and cents. They're going to get it done. And so I think the town, we've been through this before. We're going to make it work, and it's still the greatest town I live in. And I enjoyed so much doing the hay rides for the kids at the tree lighting, because guess what I saw? A happy town crowd with happy kids, and that's the. A happy town crowd with happy kids, and that's the future of our town. If we keep these citizens happy, they will stay in town, and, and as we move on, they will continue the tradition of keeping this a great town. So, again, thank you guys, thank these guys, and we're going to move on, and we're going to have a good Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you.
I get the buck back, or what, or shall I leave it in contingency?
Leave it in contingency.
Okay, Anthony, here it is, in contingency.
Victor Peter Andrea, as a citizen, Dave Plumbow. I'd just like to clarify, as Commissioner, Permanent Project Building Committee member and him, and losing backlist, the police commissioners voted unanimously to put it on the Moe property when it came back for development of all the properties. And the Permanent Project Building Committee, the consensus was to put it on the Moe property. And we appreciate the Town Council members, all of them as a whole, giving us the opportunity to do that, but it was the recommendation of both of those boards that brought it to light. So I don't want none of the citizens, and our meetings are open to the public for the Permanent Project Building Committee members to meet, but the council did exactly what they asked the board to do, we gave them our recommendation and they followed suit, so. I just want the public and everybody to know that the two other boards take full responsibility for their decision.
Dave Plumbow, as I've always said, I'm honored to be a part of this community my whole life. I'm honored to work with each and every one of you guys, and we're going to give you the building that this town deserves and you as a board council deserves. So, you know, there's been a lot of back and forth, obviously, it was, it was a hard choice for everybody. I, I think in the end it's the best choice, I'm happy to see that maybe we'll move into a town center that I think the, the group wants, but at the end of the day, I'm honored to work here with each and every one of you, and give my time, and I'll always give it as long as I'm here, and I'll probably be here the rest of my life as always, but thank you for all the efforts you guys have done as well. Thanks, and we're on our way to a new building, thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, David, thank you, Chris.
All right, so, yeah, motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion to move into executive session under CGS 1-206A Personnel Issue to include the town manager. Is that all that we need, the town manager?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Do we need legal?
I don't think so.
Do you need a second?
We need a second.
Oh, you say?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?